Call the special meeting of November 28th, 2012 to order. Roll call.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Daigle is currently absent.
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance, please stand for the pledge of allegiance which will be led by Councilman Hen.
Will you join me in our solution to the flag? My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cellphones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is a time for public comments on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will go right to current business.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
The city attorney has advised me that because I own a residential pier that I need to recuse myself from the proceedings, so I will do so at this time.
All right, thank you. Who's leading us off? All right. Mr. Kiff.
Thank you, Mayor Gardner, and council members and members of the public. I'm going to go through a PowerPoint presentation probably for about 15 minutes and then turn that back to the council and then you can decide if you have questions, ask me and go right into the public comment time. So I'm going to cover the following things with this PowerPoint. What is the city's obligation under the tidelands trust and the public trust doctrine? A little bit of background and why we are, where we are today. Two recommendations. One recommendation kind of summarizing the initial one and then one that has been changed following the workshop that was held on the 19th. Some examples of how the proposed rent would affect a number of peers. And then talk a little bit about what the revenue can be used for in the tidelands fund. And then comments and questions and I'll leave a slide up for more information. So firstly, what are tidelands? Tided and submerged lands are publicly held waterways, and this includes the land below the waters, that are owned by the people of California. And that's an important note. They're not owned by the city. They're owned by all of us as residents of California. They're assigned to the city to manage by a specific legislation. That's called the Beacon Bay Bill. And that's otherwise known as Chapter 74 of the statutes of 1978. So that's legislation passed by the California Legislature and signed by the governor. And then these tidelands are operated by the city in accordance with a number of things. One is the California Constitution. The other is the Beacon Bay Bill itself and the public trust doctrine that it calls. And then our city charter and our municipal code. Now, not all waterways in Newport Harbor are tidelands. And many of the ocean beaches are tidelands. So here's a map of tidelands in lower Newport Bay. And you'll see a number of colors. I know this is challenging to read. We'll put this on our website, too. Basically, the large blue area, it's light blue, and some of the dark blue areas around it are city tidelands. You'll see other colors. This is an orange and a kind of a, I don't know, a beige shade, at least on this screen. Those are county tidelands. And we're not here talking about county tidelands because the city doesn't administer them. One section of county tidelands that we'll talk about a little bit more are the folks who have docks there on Bayside, that portion of Bayside. So here's another look at where the county and state tidelands start to interact. So there are, everything is owned by the state, but some are administered by the state, too. Some are administered by the county and some are administered by the city. And to complicate matters even further, some are actually private waterways. So, for instance, these are where, this is the Orange County tidelands boundary and you see it wraps around Harbor Island and it wraps around the outside of Linda Isle. The interior of Linda Isle and all the docks around it and up this way are all private waterways. And then if you're in Promontory Bay, you have a different situation entirely. And we'll talk a little bit about that. So again, here's how tidelands are managed. The people of California, all of us, own the lands. The California State Legislature assigns the tidelands to the city. Then the State Lands Commission, and this is a commission of three people, they work out of Sacramento and San Francisco, they oversee our compliance with the Beacon Bay Bill. And they also manage some tidelands themselves, including Huntington Harbor, Tahoe, and more places. And then there we are at the bottom there. The City of Newport Beach manages the tidelands as a trustee. So the city's obligation, again, is to comply with the Beacon Bay Bill, including charging fair market value for the use of the tidelands. So again, these are state lands and not charging fair market value can be a gift of public funds which is prohibited by the California Constitution. And that is, that's the, the section of the Constitution is Article 16, Section 6, and it's listed there. So a couple of things happened in 2011 and 2012. We talked about this, a little bit about the workshop. Senate Bill 152 became law. It was passed in '11 and became law the first of January in 2012. And what that said was it authorized the State Lands Commission to charge rent for a private recreational pier and said that it should be based on local conditions and local fair annual rental values. So that's what the State Lands Commission started to do, most directly in Huntington Harbor. There was also something that got a lot of attention if you're following this story in 2011. And the California State Auditor hammered the State Lands Commission saying that it had not managed its lands effectively and the state therefore lost millions. And these are some of the findings. The findings said that the commission was undervaluing certain types of leases. They failed to appraise their properties and that they didn't always properly conduct rent reviews. So again, remember, the State Lands Commission is who watches us. So let me talk about then the city council's effort to date. And please know, it's been a painful one. I know, I know, this started two years ago when we updated the fees based on cost of service. That would be, for instance, if you needed to transfer a mooring, we updated the fee just associated with that transfer. At the same time, we did, we did an appraisal and analysis of mooring rents. And those were increased, have been increased over five years, five periods. And that initial step, that adoption, was November of 2010. And then about a year ago, we looked at the Balboa Yacht Basin. And those were completed at, at that time also. And that includes the slips, the apartments, and the garages. And then, as folks have followed closely, most recently, we looked at commercial marinas, large and small, other commercial uses. And now here we are at residential piers. And with the commercial marina process, the council adopted a statement that said that the conclusion of this, within one year, they would review all of this past work to make sure it was fair and equitable. So let me talk about how to set rent. That's guided by a couple of sections of the municipal code. You can see them here. And basically, they talk about setting them at fair market value as established by an appraisal. And then, rent should be based on fair market value as determined by the council. Such determination shall be based upon the findings of a city-selected appraiser. So two sections of the munich code. We also have a council policy that speaks to that. And again, it talks about the market value and the analysis of that market value shall be conducted using appraisals or other techniques. So we went ahead and got two appraisals. These are posted on our website. One was by Jim Netzer. These were both done with a date of value in August and September of 2012. One was done by Gary Rasmussen. Gary's based closer to San Diego. Their conclusion was that for residential piers, the number should be 55 cents or 50 cents a square foot per year of all tidelands usable bounded basically by the property line, the bulkhead line, the pier head line. So we, the group that's been working on this, and this includes Mr. Rosansky and Mayor Gardner and Mr. Hen, proposed a recommendation for a workshop, and I'll go over that briefly because it's changed, that the rent should split the middle at, be at 52 cents and a half per square foot per year, but it should not apply to all the tidelands off of a private property. It should only apply to the dock and float area, plus the waters of an internal slip, plus what we consider dockable or usable waters around the float, up to about 10 feet. And that their recommendation was this would be phased in over three periods to 2015. They also, continuing that recommendation, we try to use physical measurement of the existing structure to determine the square feet. There would be an appellate, appeal process if you disagreed with the measurement. And with the permit that would be issued with this, you need to maintain the dock in good order, have appropriate insurance levels. And the committee proposed a million dollars in general liability, and then hold harmless and indemnify the city. And then also, the suggestion was to amend the munich code to make it legal to rent out your residential pier. Folks may not know, that is prohibited today. I know a number of people do it, but it's not legal under the munich code. So the, we held the workshop again on the 19th and came back. And the committee has proposed these revisions, providing them in a little different format, that the rental charge would not change. It'd still be 52 and a half cents per square foot per year. The area subject to rent, though, would be refined and more limited. And that especially the backside of the dock, if that's not usable, you shouldn't be charged for it. So if some portion of the dock is actually not usable, it wouldn't be in the permit area. They talked about the phase in. Instead of three years, they went to five years. This is more consistent with what was applied to the moorings. So this would be by 2017, the final, the final amount that we'll talk about would apply by 2017, subject to CPI. There would be periodic adjustments based on CPI. And then the concept is to do a new appraisal at some point, probably five years. We had a good discussion about should the 10 feet go around and be a square corner versus a curved corner. And a curved corner makes a smaller footprint and that seemed reasonable, so the workshop group agreed with that. We had a fairly good discussion about should the waters around Newport Island be, charge the same as the rest of the harbor. We did go back to both appraisers and asked them that same question. And they said they should be charged the same amount. And they say that the smaller dock and the smaller gangway is reflective of what they would be concerned about at all and will result in a lower rent automatically even at 52 and a half cents a foot. We did talk about everyone needs, everyone has been paying a hundred dollar a year permit and that's, that permit fees applicability to private or county waterways. And the, the commitment at the workshop and following was to review this fee and see if it should be reduced or deleted. It may not be appropriate to levy that at all. We talked again about if residential pier spaces rented out. Remember, the initial recommendation was to allow it. And a number of the small commercial marinas said that makes an unfair playing field. So the proposal was if folks do charge to rent, sorry, if folks do decide to rent out their pier, make that legal, but charge a rate that's commensurate with a small commercial marina rate. And by the end of phase in, that's a dollar 26 a square foot. We also talked about terms included in the written permit. I mentioned insurance. Initially, it was to require a million dollars. The proposal now is to just say you'd have a general statement saying you need to have insurance. We wouldn't identify the amount. Transferability noted there to allow a transfer. Notice of that would go from seven days to 30 days. This is about termination if there's unpaid rent. I'm going to go through some examples now, just to give folks a picture of what this might look in, look at, like at full phase in. This is my general example. You see the, I'm losing my colors. The waters, this is blue water supposedly. This is kind of a rose-colored area around with curved edges around the float, the center area, and the gangway. You'd exclude this now. And you'd have, so in this example, the waterways would be 3,000 square feet, but the rental calculation would be smaller than that. It would be about 1,460 square feet. And that, using 52 and a half cents a square foot per year, that's a $767 rent for this.
Dave, you might make clear that the water area of 3,000 square feet is defined by the prolongation of the property line on either side out to the end of the pier.
That's correct.
And that's what the appraisers recommended.
The appraiser proposed using this big blue box and saying that should be 52 cents, 52 and a half, 50 or 55 cents a square foot. So the committee has narrowed that, with the exception of this little area out here because folks do do out there.
Dave, just following up on that, why did the appraisers recommend that the leasable area be the prolongation of the property line out to 60 feet?
Well, their belief was that under various circumstances, the permittee would have complete control to build a dock in the entirety of that footprint. And we all know that that's not, not always feasible. In fact, it's, as Harbor Resources points out, it's infeasible on Balboa Island because whatever dock you have, you're frozen with your square footage on Balboa Island.
Isn't the State Lands Commission calculate it that way?
They do, yes.
So in Huntington Harbor, they're calculating it using the whole water footprint, not just the footprint of the dock with the 10-foot buffer.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Rosansky.
Thank you.
So again, this would be, so if you did this the way the appraisal suggested, it would be from 1,500 to 1,650 a year. So a couple of examples, and this, these are estimates. This is an area in West Newport on, on the Rialto. So about 475 a year in this example. This example is a shared dock on, actually, it may not be my shared, my shared dock example, but on East Bayfront, 748. Trying to think of, I think here's my shared example. This is a shared dock, so split between two property owners. You see what the waterway is, the float and gangway, the total square foot, the rent for the entirety of it. And then that would be split between two property owners at 627. Excuse the change in format, but two of, different groups were doing this. Our GIS is doing this and it's a little bit more precise. This is South Bayfront on the Balboa Island. So you could see how this is working. They're taking the narrow gangway, the float, and the waters around the gangway, sorry, the waters around the float, and coming up with these annual rental values. This is 1410 South Bayfront. It's a big dock, so it's a bigger number. Just continuing along the harbor, this is around 13th Street on the Peninsula. And in this example, the area between the piers is less than 20 feet. And we talked about being, having at least 10 feet on each side. So the proposal is obviously not to do that. It's to take the amount that you could dock, so maybe that's eight feet or seven feet, and only charge that. So this example is 1,100 a year. Edgewater Place, you've got one really big dock there, a number of smaller ones. This is an example where on Edgewater Place, the private property line goes out to here, for instance, in 417. You see where that's not within the rental calculation because that's not something that's rented tidelands. This area here are private lands. Not charging, cannot charge for private lands. More examples, Vialito Seude. Here's where you get to some of the bigger docks in the harbor, some of the higher numbers because it's the higher square footage. Channel Road by Peninsula Point, a couple more. You see how, in this, this case, a little bit over 1,000, this is 935. Here, you do have, again, the side buffers are clipped because they're not 10 feet, they're less than 10 feet. And again, these are just estimates. This is our, our best look to give the council and the community some examples of how this might work.
If you go back there, also, if the property line is narrow, we go by the property line and not the 10 feet. Isn't that correct?
That's correct. And Chris is pointing out to me accurately, we, if the committee's new revision here to not charge the backside, these would lower those numbers if these are not boatable waters on the backside. And oftentimes, they're not, except only in high tide. And that's, that doesn't make sense to charge in that way. So a lot of these examples still have the backside added in and that would reduce the This is the phase in period over five years, again, to 2017. The top line is hard to read, but the math is right. It's how it would be phased in. And remember, we talked about a number of different examples. Everyone would have the same phase in period, but if you ended up, your final rent was supposed to be 748, this would be what your phase in period would look like. In 2013, you'd go from $100 to 229, then 358. So if you were one of the bigger docks and you were at 1,827 at the end, you'd have the larger jump, but it's an even jump each time. Let me talk about what areas are excluded because I think this is kind of the quirks of our harbor, wonderful quirks, but still quirks. And the city cannot and will not charge rent where no city-administered public asset is being rented. So I mentioned about Bayside Drive, and this is, you could see the addresses here, the 16s, the 20 to 23s, and then on Bayside Place. These are county tidelands. There is no proposal. We cannot charge, cannot, will not charge rent for that. Promontory Bay is another example of this, little different twist. These are public waterways, but the, the folks in Promontory Bay have recorded easements allowing a dock, and we believe these preclude rent. I mentioned Linda Isle and Harbor Island. And again, here's a shot of the county tidelands. If you look at Linda Isle, again, you've got private waterways back here. You've got a couple of city fee waterways back here, but not many. Most of it is county tidelands on this side or private waterways in here. And also, Harbor Island there, you see, that's wrapped by county tidelands. So those are not, not our lands, can't charge rent. Dover Shores is another big one. These are private waterways inside the fingers of Dover Shores. Even the docks on the outside of the fingers, you see that, that parcel line there, those are county waters. So there's no proposal to charge rent for county waters. Let me talk about the uses of the tidelands fund and then I'll stop talking. The tidelands revenue uses are described in the Beacon Bay Bill. And they say we can use those revenues, we must use those revenues, for the establishment improvement and conduct of a harbor, for the establishment improvement and conduct of bathing beaches, marinas, and similar recreational facilities open to the public, for the preservation, maintenance, and enhancement of lands in their natural state. And I've truncated these, but that's basically what we can use the money on. And so the tidelands capital plan is being developed to say the, this money would go towards dredging, seawall maintenance and repair, and I'm talking about the public ones, public docks and other harbor amenities, marinas and water, public marinas and water quality protections. Here's for more information, again, this is all up on our website, including the appraisals. If you didn't get a chance to get a copy of this presentation, we'll put that on the website as well. With that, I'd welcome your questions or comments.
I just want to say that, as you can see, there were some changes after the workshop. And the committee has continued to communicate just about daily, I would say, because we're getting thoughtful hourly, thoughtful emails in. And we have still continued to, we have some changes, I think, that will be suggested tonight even before you pitch in. And I don't know if one of the committee members wants to talk about that first. Councilman Hen?
Yeah, sure. One of the issues that's been of concern is the insurance requirement. And in particular, in conjunction with the hold harmless or the indemnity. And a concern that that makes the insurance requirement either very expensive or perhaps infeasible. And so I think the, I think council really is going to need to seriously consider that issue. And as to whether there are, is another feasible solution that might make sense on that. And one of the communications that we received was from, I believe, the attorney representing the Stop the Dock Tax folks, suggesting that perhaps we should consider a city-organized insurance coverage that would cover both the city and the dock owner, but organize it under a commercially-generated, hopefully, lower-cost solution. We don't know if that's a feasible solution, but we have committed to look at that. And so we will do that. And so one of the suggestions that I would have is that we penned the issue of the insurance requirement, perhaps, until we've had a chance to really examine that. And also, more than likely, be willing to give up the hold harmless in this in order to make whatever solution we identified be a feasible solution. I doubt that we will, well, we can't arrive at a conclusion on that tonight because it is going to take some more analysis to make it happen. It's been very clear to me that, you know, we've continued to get a lot of good input since the workshop. I hope it's clear to everyone in the audience that even as it relates to the input at the workshop, we've made some substantive changes in the original proposal. We intend to continue to give effect to public comment and ideas and concerns about all of this. I'm guessing, Mayor, that we're going to get a lot more comment and a lot more suggestions and ideas this evening. We could get, we could run fairly late. It looks to me like there's a lot of people that are going to have something to say tonight. And so my suggestion would be with the concurrence of council that, at your discretion, we consider adjourning this meeting after we get all the public input that people want to give us, that we consider adjourning this meeting to a time certain, say 4:00 PM on December the 11th, at which time we would continue the council discussion with the benefit of more time to think about the suggestions that we're getting, have gotten and are getting tonight, such that we would not make final decisions tonight. We give ourselves a chance to really reflect carefully. But I do think we need to get all the public input, complete the public input on this, and then continue the council consideration at the next meeting. And I solicit other feelings from council members.
Councilman Rosansky?
I would support that as well, although I prefer to see this as a special meeting set up on the 10th as opposed to the regular meeting on the 11th. Kent?
Do we, what is the availability of council for the 10th?
I am not in town on the 10th. I don't get back from Boston until the evening at 10.
Okay. I think it is essential that we all be there.
No, I agree. I didn't realize she was out of town. Well, I would, I support having another meeting. I prefer not to have it on the regular meeting night. I think clearly there's a lot of people here and we have other business to conduct that night as well. And so if we could find even a date the week before, maybe the Thursday before or something.
I guess I'd like to see us wait until we hear the testimony tonight and then make the decision at that point.
Yeah, well, that'd be fine.
Mayor for Tim Curry?
Well, we did actually, I think, think about dates, and I think that's the one workable date that we have, is at 4:00 on the 11th. And so, I think Councilman Henn and the committee made a good recommendation on this. I'm interested in hearing what the people have to say, and I'm also interested, and I'm concerned about the insurance and the indemnification provisions. I'm not sure they're appropriate here, and I'm glad to see that the committee's recognizing that and taking some time to go back and revisit that issue. So I would be supportive of that recommendation as well.
We will have public comment in just a moment. I just want to say that one of my proposals of change, having gotten some very thoughtful communications, is to leave the rent issue as it is, that we would not allow the rental of the peers, we would not change that ordinance. So, those of you who may have strong feelings one way or the other might want to comment on that as well tonight. How many of you are planning on speaking? Be honest this time. Usually, three people raise their hands, and then 42 people want to speak. Really, is that all? If I say if you can't raise your hand, you can't speak, is that all that's going to speak? All right, well, not very many. What sort of time limit? Any suggestions?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, is that, all right. Now, what we'd like you to do, because I know more of you as people say something that'll spur some ideas. We do want to get out of here at a reasonable hour for everybody, so if you would line up a few at a time, and we'll go from microphone to microphone so we can keep a flow going. And I will be firm about the three minutes, because it's not fair to give someone four minutes and then someone else only three. So we try to be concise, and we are listening. We want more, the more concrete, solid suggestions you can give us, aside from the fact that, you know, you simply don't like it, we understand a lot of you feel that way, that will help us. So, public comment, please step forward.
Mayor Gardner, while people are stepping up, one thing that I should mention is that if we adjourn the meeting to December the 11th at 4:00 p.m., that would be at the New City Hall site over on Fashion Island.
It would be at the New City Hall, and if we adjourn the meeting after having taken public comment, there would not be public comment on that night. There would just be deliberations. So you do want to have your say tonight, and of course, you can continue to communicate through phone or email as we go on. So, please.
I want to talk about a couple of things. My understanding was we were going to allow, you were going to allow us to rent out our docks to recoup some of the additional cost to us. Secondly, by renting out our docks, it also increases the coffers of the city, because we would be paying you roughly a dollar or more per square foot, also increases income tax situation. Secondly, your 10-foot around the docks, most people only have one or two boats, and it doesn't seem correct that you should charge people for a 10-foot area on all four sides of the dock when they're not going to use all four sides of the dock.
Can we get your name for the record, sir?
My name's Chet Needleman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And Mr. Needleman, just so we're clear, you support the authorization to rent out your dock. Is that your testimony?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
And you'd be willing to pay the higher rent to do that?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
I would make it clear that we do intend to not charge for the backside of the dock.
Yeah.
So that is something that's already in the proposal.
I thought it was just a suggestion. I didn't realize you'd already come to a conclusion.
Good, good point.
That's the, that's the proposal, yes.
Go ahead.
I'm Seymour Beak. I live on the South Bayfront on Balboa Island. I think this proposal is obviously a game changer in terms of owning a private pier in Newport Bay. I think a lot of people made their purchase decisions when they bought their houses here under a system of permitting process for the pier that they understood would go on into the future. Doing it by the square foot changes all of that. Also, I think people have added on to their piers and built their piers, not understanding that someday the configuration of the pier would contribute, would be built by the square foot. Something that I didn't see on any of these charts and that I haven't heard mentioned is the fact that some places in the harbor, especially Balboa Island, piers are built, fixed piers are built over sand and water that's public has access to. So not only does the pier owner have access to that property, but other, the public does too. People swim under it, paddle kayaks under the pier, walk under the pier at low tide. And I just wonder if that has been considered in this, in these calculations. And when it comes to the rental issue, I just hope that the council is aware of the fact that there's already a parking issue around most of these areas where there are private piers. If you're encouraging people to rent out their piers, which of course, upping the fees will do, you're going to exacerbate the parking issues and crowding issues and noise issues and all of those things that go along with the ring, dock space. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mayor Gardner and members of council. My name is Lawrence Lifer, and I live on Newport Island at 3706 Channel Place. I have a dock which I do not rent in part or in whole to others. I'm a retired California Certified General Appraiser and have lived on Newport Island for 23 years. Prior to my retirement, I was an associate with James Netzer, NAI, and in fact, assisted him in a very minor way with one of his Newport Bay appraisals for the city by surveying commercial marina boat rental fees. I retired shortly after that and did not continue, nor contribute, nor discuss with him any aspect of his appraisal assignment. I have a very high guard for Mr. Netzer's integrity and competence and having worked in his office for 10 years. As a member of the Board of the West Newport Beach Association and the owner of a residential dock, I felt it was essential to review both city-ordered tidelands appraisals on this issue that were available on the city website, namely, the Netzer appraisal dated August 10th, 2012, and the Rasmussen appraisal dated November 2nd, 2012. In my opinion, performing an appraisal to determine fair market value for private residential dock use of the tidelands was a very difficult assignment, as there is scant data available of directly comparable situations to draw upon. Furthermore, most data on dock rental rates are quoted in linear terms of boat length, requiring use of some methodology by the appraiser to convert length to rental area measure. At this point, I have a question about the lease. This residential tidelands pier permit document, is this a permit or is it a lease? Does anybody have?
It's a permit.
It's a permit.
An annually renewable permit.
Okay. And was this document provided to the two appraisers for the purpose of preparing their reports?
No, it wasn't at all.
Okay. If not, then the appraisers had no way of comparing their results to leases of other leased tidelands areas. If there was no subject lease used in the appraisal reports, the reports do not comply with USPAP standards, USPAP being Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice for Determining Market Rent or Fair Market Rent, the definition of which states, "The most probable rent that a property should bring in a competitive and open market reflecting all conditions and restrictions of the lease agreement, including permitted uses, use restrictions, expense obligations, terms, concessions, et cetera." So, both appraisal reports don't include discussions, which enables comparison to Newport Beach tidelands in the absence of a lease agreement for the subject. Rasmussen's report includes a sample lease for property in Huntington Harbor.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm talking about both resolutions that you're talking about. I talked to the clerk. Clerk said I could have five minutes. You're saying I only have three.
No, we had agreed that we would give three minutes. Correct. And on the agenda, it does state five, but it does say at the discretion of council that time can be. You can submit, we have gotten your letter. I mean, I've read your.
I have sent you, well, I'm reading it for the purpose of informing the public that's attending here, as well as for those that may not have read it, come to council.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we will, we can put it on, we can make it available on the website.
Now, if everyone could please calm down, it's three minutes per person. That's served, if you wouldn't mind taking your seat.
Okay. I think that's very unfair.
Next, please. I think that you might want to hear what the next person has to say also.
I wanted to hear what he has to say.
I'll suggest that.
Because those were some questions that you guys were having a hard time answering.
No, we don't.
Just for, just briefly, the council, the point of public comment is for the council to receive comments from the public. There's no obligation to engage the public in a back-and-forth exchange. So, while we may answer some questions, you're basically here to give input to the council for them to consider your comments. And if there is disruption by any member of the public, you know, in essence, the police officers would have to remove somebody who's being disruptive. So it's just kind of for your information.
All right. Thank you very much. Go ahead, please.
You wonder why we don't trust you. Yeah, sorry. It's just, well, being honest.
Well, you, you know, we don't, we can stop. We can adjourn right now, and I don't want to. I want to hear what people have to say, but we have certain rules. When we did every other public hearing we've had, we have adhered to these. I think we can do it here tonight. Please go ahead.
I was going to suggest there's so few people that you give him the extra two minutes after you've heard from everybody else if you decide. Aside from that, it's unfortunate Councilman Sullivan doesn't get to comment on something because if you don't have docks, then you also have an interest in not being representative of the people you just want to represent, some of whom do have docks. So that's odd. I appreciate the suggestion, Councilman Henn, that we, you defer this and spend more time studying the issues. By the way, my name is Danny Sullivan, live at 3607 Finley. And as has been raised once before, there's a question of whether or not it makes sense to actually assess this tax or dock or fee or whatever you want to call it, based on the size of the dock, rather than the actual boats that are there. I live in Newport, where apparently we all have small docks. Mine is 80-foot long. That's what came with the house when I bought it. I have an 18-foot Duffy, so I'm not going to be using most of that dock, and now I'm contemplating whether or not I actually have to spend the expense of taking it apart. So it might make sense to actually charge us for the actual water space we're using, rather than what you think we're going to be using, especially if the market value is what the market would be doing. The market doesn't charge people for space that they're not using. The water that you want to charge us for around our dock, I'm a paddleboarder, and anybody who paddleboards knows that we often stand near close to docks, because we don't want to get killed being out on the water. So if you're charging us a rent for the water that's unpassable, then we have people trespassing over that water that we've been renting. That doesn't seem to be fair either. The contract that's proposed in there doesn't give any sort of a long-term lease or guarantee to the people who are doing it, which is what you might do to people who have commercial interests, and that seems to go to how you're assessing the possible value. The idea that there's a market value for these things, I don't know how you come up with that, because I don't know that the city actually rents moorings outside of anybody's homes. I know that you have moorings that are rented at the end of streets, but unless the city is suggesting that it's going to suddenly go into the business of renting out moorings in front of private homes that have no access to them, other than by water, you really have to consider that. What is the market value of a mooring in front of my house that nobody can get to? I don't know what it is. And if I abandon it, are you, and if we all abandon our docks, are you suggesting that the city is then going to go out there and try to rent them? Because then are we going to have suddenly 900 different docks that are all being legislated and organized, because we don't want to pay a fee? And that goes to the whole issue about the contract, by the way. The contract suggests that if we give up our docks, we give them back to the city, and not at a market value of whatever it cost to construct them, you just apparently get to take them over. So that's something that needs to be examined as well. That's just some of the many questions that are here. I would really strongly encourage you, first of all, to spend a lot more time examining this, not bring it right back to a vote. I also suggest that if you're going to be suggesting that we all have to pay a rent, that we don't get these complicated formulas where I got to figure out what the back of my dock is and what the city considers passable or not passable, send us a proposed bill. Send it to everybody who has a dock in the city of Newport Beach, so we know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, my name is Bill Kenny. I reside at 824 Harbor Island Drive. I reside within the development known as Promontory Bay, and as City Manager Kiff stated, my property, along with the other properties within Promontory Bay, have a perpetual easement for pier and slip purposes. I would like to respectfully disagree with one item in the staff report, where it says these easements may preclude rent. For the record, the easements were granted when the Promontory Bay tidelands were private property. The city and/or the state took those tidelands, subject to that easement. That means that we have an absolute unconditional right to utilize that area for pier and slip purposes in perpetuity without charge, fee, or assessment. I received the postcard from the city advising of this meeting, and that postcard states in part, and I quote, "Areas that have recorded licenses or easements for piers, such as Promontory Bay, will not be charged or rented." My purpose for being here this evening is merely to place into the record that postcard and ask that if, in fact, this council has any intention of charging a fee or rent on Promontory Bay properties, that you either let us know now or prior to the conclusion of this public hearing. Thank you for your time.
Next, please.
My name's Hugh Randolph. I reside at 3908 Channel Place, and I'm here tonight representing 39, or 3818, 3900, 3906, 3908, and 3912. We strictly protest against the tax. The idea and the representation that we received when bought the property 40 years ago was that the property that the dock was on, owned, was by the owner, by owner of the property. I don't know how you can change those things, but the Irvine Company, when we lived at Linda Isle, came by and requested that we sign a waiver for them to dredge the main channel up to our dock. So, they understand that the dock is owned by the property, and I think really you need to research it, and I see no additional need to have other rentals for other property, I mean, to rent out your dock to other people because of the parking problem. It's disastrous in the summertime, anyway. But I thank you for your time, and I thank you for consideration, but I wish it would reconsider the dock tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Chris Bassett, and I also have a private dock. I had to rebuild it when I bought the house, because it was in bad disrepair. If this does pass, if this assessment is passed, I will be inclined to tear down my dock. And not only will I do it, I have several friends and a family member that will also be doing the same. So I hope you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Devin Kelly, and I've been to several of the meetings, and I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done. I really do. I'm going to finish up. This gentleman's here, and I'm going to add a few comments of my own. He didn't have a chance to finish. It reads, "Both appraisal reports do not include discussions which enables comparison to Newport Beach tidelands in the absence of a lease agreement for the subject. Rasmussen's report includes a sample lease for a property in Huntington Harbor, which is for a 10-year term. However, if the Newport Beach lease or permit is for only one year, one cannot conclude that they are equivalent leases, and the concluded market rent is questionable. All other things being equal, a 10-year lease would certainly be considered more valuable to a lessee than a one-year permit. Both appraisal reports fail in determining a fair market value by lacking a lease agreement for the subject and are in violation of USPAP." And I just, that's this gentleman over here finishing up his, and I just like, the rush to judgment on this is killing me. I think we need to slow the train down, and I know you've done a lot of work, but I think we need to, beyond December 11th, slow this down and really look hard at what we're facing. 900 people are affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm Ann McConnercoat. I live at 3410 Marcus Avenue. My background, I'm a retired Marine Corps officer. I was a pilot, I'm a furloughed airline captain looking for work. I'm struggling. And what I'd like to do, in that time, I've been maintaining my properties as a manager, property owner, and maintenance guy, is I'd like to point out some facts that will tie back into the docks and dock fee, is, as the owner builder, I'm going to flatly say, without offending anybody, my canal is an open sewer, and it's not caused by boat owners dumping their tanks or the street runoff. It's caused by the leach field effect of all the rotted-up sewer lines that most of us live, are tapoed, that the bottom of that cast-iron pipe is rotted out. And I know the city has been vacuuming the sewer lines for the last 10 years, because I've talked with crews every month out there vacuuming sand out of the sewer lines. And that's what I have to deal with, because every month, my backyard floods, and that sewer water, without offending anybody, I have to deal with. It's not that bad out in the main harbor, but I'm dealing with what would be considered hazardous material. Now, as a landlord, I'm required to my tenants here in Newport Beach and close to Mesa to provide safe and habitable environments. That's a requirement. I've been dealing with this for, as long as I have lived here, since 19, or 97. Haven't said anything. Haven't said anything because I didn't know who to complain to. But once the city starts renting me my property, you become the landlord. You then have to comply with the same standards I do to my tenants. I just finished in Costa Mesa, changing out a rotted, orange cast-iron sewer pipe. And that's in soil, dry soil, not in the sand here. And I think you really need to look at the outfall of when you start charging me for my land, and I'm not threatening anybody, but as I said, I'm a retired Marine. I dealt with a lot of government issues when I was off in active duty, and I dealt with environmental impact on base issues, a lot of other issues. But once I get that right receipt, you will be my landlord, and I will file a complaint with the EPA stating a statement of facts, what I know and what I deal with. And you really need to look at that to become a landlord and really understand.
Where do you live? I'm sorry, where do you live?
3410 Marcus Avenue. At the end of 35th Street.
Okay, thank you. Next, please. Yep. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jill Lindsay. I live at 4 Balboa Coves. I just wanted to make, get a clarification here. You say you cannot charge for private lands? If my property actually extends out into the bay, and my pier and float sit there, you won't be charging me? Am I understanding you correctly?
Yes, if it's on, if it's on private waterways, or if you own the land underneath, you would not be charged.
Okay. And what about the people that cross over my land?
Who crosses over your land?
People in boats, all the time. Are you going to give any compensation for?
No, there's a, there's a general federal requirement that, that waterways be generally inaccessible. So somebody crossing over the waterway would not, in fact, be subject to a rent by you.
Okay. I just would like to close with the fact that I think this is a travesty, that you're imposing these kinds of taxes on the backs of the people who live here and support this community day in and day out.
Next, please.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, good evening. My name is Walter Havocorst III. I'm seeking an opposition of the residential dock tax. I've been a resident of Newport Beach since, I graduated from USC in 1986, and CDM High School in 1982. At this time, it's apparent that the city's objective is to take the position of federal government, to oppose a little tax on the wealthy. And unfortunately, if you look at the details I've just presented today, you know, CPI increase can make the dock tax up to $10,000 a year if you look at the amortization of a 10% escalator versus a 1% or 2% escalator. Escalators are very dangerous. Also, your property values will go down. They will go down by $100,000 for every $400 and $78 you charge per year in rent lease, based on a 4% mortgage. So on some people, they'll be seeing a decrease in property values of up to $600,000 or even more. You need to allow people to rent. I'm, I'm in favor of renting the docks. It should be done because people on fixed incomes cannot afford it. You need to protect them. They shouldn't be losing their value of the property and the right to use it. And the insurance, I just heard from a person behind me, that no one will underwrite your liability insurance, not even, the only one that can actually underwrite it would be Chubb. And I understand that's very, very cost prohibitive. So any money that, that they have to pay is going to be more insurance premiums. And also, in agreement with the lady that was just up here, I have to also say that your 10-foot area around the docks, as a ex-Harbor Patrol Reserve Officer, will not work. You need to look at that a little differently. So I urge you to reconsider this, give it a little more time than you actually have done. You can't rush this stuff through. You cannot rush it through. This is a very important item, and obviously by the emotions in this audience, honorable Mayor and Council members, please take your time and review all the issues.
You said the 10-foot isn't, doesn't make any sense. What, what should it be?
It should be going, you cannot charge in front of a dock, even if the, there's all these rules around docks, as my experience states, that between, on the side ties of a dock, you can't do the 10-foot. You can't say it's 5-foot. You can't just split it. Because even if you split it, it doesn't work, because you still have to have access between the boats. Boats are a moving item. The dock, I can understand why you're coming up with the GIS data on that. The actual slip, and you're using, I can see, the inside of the slip, but around it, it's so frivolous.
Okay.
You can't be doing that.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
And your CPI increases are going to get really expensive. Those of us in the audience, you know, I'll be retiring in hopefully 10 to 20 years. That can get very expensive. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
I live at 933 Vialito Sut.
And, and your name is?
Gail Rosenstein.
Thank you.
I don't mind the increase for the yearly rent of my dock, but I do, I'm very disappointed that you're allowing people to rent out their docks to boats. I won't appreciate, I don't have a big boat, because I don't want to spoil my view. And I don't want my neighbors to be renting to somebody with a big boat and spoiling my view. So.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Counsel, I'm Roger Peachels. I reside at 1204 South Bayfront. And I'm, I'm appalled at the tax on the tax. Where does it stop? Are you going to start taxing every kayak that uses the water, every paddleboarder?
Oh, yeah. We thought, how do we do that?
Yeah, I figured that there's always going to be something else coming. But I really, really am appalled at the heavy-handedness of this council and shutting down people that, that want to speak their mind. I think it's a money grab, and I think it's a bunch of.
I, I would just say that that issue of charging users came up today at the tidelands management committee meeting. So it's not something that, that the council created, it was something that came from one of our residents. Next, please.
Newport Island Bud Reevely. I have a picture of my neighbor's dock that I think would tell a thousand words, if you will. And I'd just like to pause it.
Oh, okay.
This was this afternoon about 3:30. My neighbor's dock. It was totally, it was, it turned back on. So can you briefly describe what it is you're trying to show us? All right, it's, it's my neighbor's dock, and mine is the same, Newport Island. I'm in the Rialto. You can see that this is not even a low tide today. It's, it's not even a minus tide. So my side ties are in the mud, and I could never rent something like that. I mean, I have to disclose that you're going to be unable to move your boat, you know, once or twice a day, maybe. So I hope, and I've heard Dave say that you're going to consider that, but no one's ever promised to consider it, and you've never set up a procedure. The other thing I have to say is that you are really impacting my property when you have a hold harmless clause and an insurance requirement. That's going to give a lot of people pause when they're buying your house, when they go look at that clause and say, my God, where is that going to go? I can't afford to indemnify this city, for God's sakes. Why would you ever even think of something like that? What's the, what's the rationale for driving us into the ground? Yeah, we'll have to pay some rent, maybe, but for God's sakes, you don't know what that indemnification could possibly mean. And if they, soon as they find out, you know, that you're, they're the landlord, they're certainly going to sue you, and I'll be involved in it some way. Then I'd also like to notice, note that this cost of living thing is going to get people where they really hurt. We know it's coming. Cost of living in 1980 was 14.6%. And the years in front of that and behind it were over 10 sometimes. You can't keep this in there. You've got to have something like the protection we have in our, in our tax bills, 2%. Make it reasonable, make it something we can understand and look forward to. I am retired. I live on a fixed income. I love my home. I don't want to be forced out of it. And Proposition 13 has allowed most of us to stay in our homes. Now, don't do this to us that are sitting there on the edge. Help us. Make this fair and make it logical, so we can all see it and understand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Mike Brewer. I, I actually don't live here in Newport Beach. I was born and raised in Newport Beach. I'm speaking on behalf of my parents, who actually live on Vialito. When I came down tonight, I actually came down to visit. I had no idea this was going on. And having a short conversation with both my mom and my dad, the discussion came up that if this tax goes through, because unfortunately, they do have a larger dock. They live in a larger home. They got lucky at the time. Business was great. No longer a business. They're now living on a very fixed income. They happen to live in a nice house, but yet, the conversation that came up was, well, if this goes through, going to have to start thinking about, well, maybe we won't carry our own insurance, personal insurance anymore, because that's how it's going to affect us. We're talking about my parents. That's ridiculous, for you to even consider it. I find it really interesting that the only person had to recruit, had to recruit, whatever it is, he had to leave because he owns a dock. I think he should be here. He should be talking about it. I'd like to know what his feeling is. It'd be interesting. And yet you guys sit here, and, I'm sorry, I'm going to say, you made a joke a minute ago that kind of irked me, I know it irked a lot of people in here, about the kayaking. Oh, we're looking for a way to do that. That's a horrible thing for, for a president, for someone who's sitting on the board to make that kind of a comment. That's just terrible. That's wrong. And I'm, I just got to say it. I think it was out of line, and if you guys go through with doing this, there are a lot of people in this harbor that support Newport Beach, that have lived here a long time. There are a lot of people that are just going to go fine. We just won't rip, rip out our dock if that's what we need to do. Because that's what it will come down to. And then, what are you going to do then? It's just kind of getting ridiculous. It's one thing after another.
I would just say, I'm a paddleboarder, and I have tried to figure out a way that we could get people like me to make our contribution, just without hiring somebody. I don't know how we do it. But that, that's why I was saying that, because I do think users, I think we should all participate. That was just, that's just my personal feeling as someone who does use the harbor. I don't have a boat. Go ahead, please.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes.
Aaron, can, can you explain again for the audience why Councilmember Selig needed to recuse himself from this discussion? Because I, I think these people want to know why he's not here, and I, maybe he didn't explain it well enough before he left.
Yes, under the Political Reform Act, people who have a financial interest in decisions cannot participate in those decisions. Because Councilmember Selig owns a dock, this, whatever decision's made here, whether it's a positive decision that would, you know, cost him more money, or a negative decision, either way, if it has any financial impact on him, he cannot participate in the decision. So, while it's sometimes unfortunate, there's lots of council members who have wanted to participate in issues where the interest seems very remote, the financial interest is very remote, but they haven't been able to, and that's just the way the rules work as far as conflicts of interest.
And these are not just our rules, this is the state of California.
No, these are rules promulgated by the state of California.
But if he's not paying a rent, how does he have a financial interest?
Well, his, because exactly that reason. He's not paying a rent, just like some of the people commented tonight here, that their property values are going to decline because of this potential rent. And so that would put him in a, maybe a better position than they would be. And so he could influence making his home more valuable because he doesn't have to pay a rent. And so although it is a little bit strained, unfortunately, that's the restrictions that we, we face here as council members when it comes to our own financial interests.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. James Turner, Bayside Drive. I would like to request that we be able to speak at the December 11th proposed meeting. I need to have more information about insurance, as we've just glanced over the top of that subject. I'm very unhappy with the appraisal method that went on. We have square foot appraisals in Long Beach and the 14-cent area, Huntington Beach, square footage, 32-cent area. We're at 52 cents a square foot. I think that I'd like to hear a lot more about how we arrived at that particular evaluation. So hopefully, we can carry this forward at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Council members, Madam Mayor. I'm Don Abrams. I want to thank you for your patience in listening to us and your hard work. I can see this is not popular. I wouldn't want your job asking us to pay more for anything, and you're up, have elections, and it's just, it can't be a fun job for you to do this, but I appreciate how you're going about it. I own two homes on the Grand Canal. One has a dock, or we call it a high-tide pier. I'm not sure if it's, this would be covered by, by this new fee, since it's only navigable, navigable part of the day. But my concern really is with our infrastructure here, in our waterways and on the Grand Canal. The Grand Canal is deteriorating. It hasn't been dredged in 10 years, and needs to be done. Our seawalls are falling apart. I've been to study sessions that you all have discussed these, and it's clear that you know that we have to repair these things, too. In addition, the seawalls apparently are going to have to be raised between inches and feet in the near future. And what I understand is that you intend to use the money from these fee increases to do that, which, at least to me, is a good goal, to repair these things. My comment is that I hope you'll be reasonable with whatever you, you do. I think some of the ideas to force us to have insurance and indemnification are, are not reasonable, and I think there have been many good comments on these different points. But I think you, I'm sure you are going to raise these, but I encourage you to be reasonable and consider the circumstances of, of everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. I'm Bob Coop. I live on Holiday Road. Been a resident for 49 years in Newport Beach. I just had a couple of questions that I hope you consider when you implement this. How many people are we going to have to hire to enforce this? This, this looks very complicated and very expensive to operate. You're going to have folks that say, well, you know, I've got this, you know, five-foot waterway, but I can't get my boat on at high tide, so somebody's going to have to go down there and inspect it and determine whether or not this rentable water area. Who's going to be responsible for keeping the, the erosion and buildup out of those areas that were once rentable and now they're not? Are we going to be constantly reviewing all these docks? So we're going to have to put on extra manpower. Are we going to create a whole new, new department? I mean, this is, this seems a little bit excessive, but when, when you look at the value of these folks' properties, in addition to that, I'm a real estate agent, I have been for a long time. Simple math on this is $100,000 of financing, right now, costs you $450 to $500 a month. So if you're going to throw some of those numbers up there, it looked like they were $3,000. Just at a glance, that guy's house just went down in value $600,000. That's at today's nice, low-interest rates. So this is a big impact. We're not talking about pennies here. We have a lot of folks that bought these. We heard somebody here that owned his house for 40 years. Where's he, if he owns, he happens to be the lucky guy that has a big dock, where's he going to come up with $3,000 for that? This is, this is impacting lives. This is not just a little extra tax on the wealthy. This is a big deal for some folks. In addition, I don't think we need more folks in the city to operate a, a big new department. You know, something more reasonable, maybe, I don't know, double their fee and give them a, a small increase every year, like Prop 13 halves. These folks that have been here this long, we can't just, just lamp base them with a huge increase in taxes. A small and reasonable tax, change how it operates, great. And the, the other thing I'm hearing now is, who's going to underwrite this insurance? Who's going to have to pay for all this stuff? And it's here, you're renting this, it's your property, you're renting it to the guy that's got to indemnify you. Where in the world is he going to get enough insurance to indemnify a city, and what's Where in the world is he gonna get enough insurance to indemnify a city, and what's it going to cost? Without having answers to these questions, I don't see how you could possibly move forward on this subject. If there's ever a time in political history to kick the can down the road to the next council, this is it. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Next, please. Go ahead.
My name is Sarah Abraham. I live at 908 West Bay Avenue, adjacent to the 10th Street Beach. My husband and I have owned our home for 30 years. I'm opposed to the 10-foot waterway because we have fishermen who cast their lines between our dock and our neighbor's dock. We have kayakers, we have boarders, we have little kids, we have dogs, we have everything. So, every time somebody's in that 10 feet, am I supposed to run out and say, you owe me money? Because I'm paying the city, so you have to pay me? You know, and that's the part that I'm opposed to.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, please.
My name is James Westling. I live at 40 Balboa Coves, Newport Beach. I was a little concerned when I saw the diagrams, and it looks like it's kind of arbitrarily and capricious that you all of a sudden have a 10-foot boundary around your dock. I've got an 8-by-26-foot dock, I've got a 21-foot Duffy. Now, I live across from Newport Island. At low tide, the ends of my dock would not be usable for side tucks. It's, charging me for that area is sort of analogous, if I went down to the Newport Pier and pulled into a parking spot, and I have to pay for that spot, but I have to pay for the one on the other side, in case my wife comes down and joins me for lunch, or a friendship. You know, chances of that happening are not very good. I think it should be looked at, I mean, I'd be willing to pay the fee for that 10 feet on either side, if the city would like to come down and dredge, maybe every five years, and make it, you know, usable, I think that'd be great. And then, the, my main issue, I think, seeing that, because in my particular case, I appreciate the fact that they took away charging between the pier and the seawall. And being a private owner down there, I paid, you know, for the installation of, and the maintenance of my own seawall, and my dock, and my pier, and all that. And I just take that in stride as being able to live on the bay. But I think I'd really like to have the commission take a look at, instead of, instead of starting out with the 10-foot boundary on the three sides of everybody's dock, why don't we start out with, let's say, a dock in my, and if you do a flyover, you do a Google map, and you look at a dock, and you say, okay, there's a guy with his dock, and he's got a boat, and he's got nothing on the side. Let's start there. Let's start with the square footage of the dock, and the ramp, and 10-foot out on the long side where I keep my boat. Let's start there, and perhaps then, as Mr. Coop was talking about, if there's gonna be a big department created when the city administer all this, then perhaps they could do a survey, maybe every year, whatever, on a non-publicized date, and they go by, and they see who's got dock, who's got what boats on what docks. There's 900 of them out here. It would seem like, if you start out with what is reasonable to begin with, which is the actual state of the dock today, and then move from that in the future, would be more appropriate in the city of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Gardner and council members. My name is Christine Fager. I've written to you on behalf of the Newport Beach Dock Owners Association. I'm also a resident and a dock owner. I reside at 235 East Bayfront, and have been there for over 22 years. There are a lot of issues that have been raised tonight, and at the previous workshop. Part of the problem is the process that we follow. On November 13, I believe it was November 13, at a meeting where you considered the commercial dock owners' issues, I asked you to please table this until all the citizens had the opportunity to get the information, and go through it, and understand it. Instead, a workshop was set for Monday, November 19, three days before Thanksgiving. For the first time at that workshop, I, as a professional, was given the information on the permit and on the proposal. It's very difficult to be given something at a workshop, which was primarily a lecture, and be able to go through it. Once again, almost everybody there universally said, let's stall this, let's wait, let's go through, and let's understand it. Instead, here we are, I still have my Thanksgiving leftovers in my refrigerator, and we're given this proposal that simply has so many issues in it, and issues that frankly can be addressed. I had a very constructive conversation this afternoon with Michael Torres, one of the assistant city attorneys, specifically on the insurance. And the insurance, as I've written to you, is simply unworkable. Homeowners' insurance policies do not have insured contract clauses. Only a CGL policy would have that. I worked with a broker, and we came up with carriers that would definitely not provide any coverage to the city, leaving the homeowner bare, leaving the homeowner with an obligation to defend and indemnify the city at their own cost. We all know how much these lawsuits cost. Half a million dollars is a cheap one. And that's even before we get into indemnity. The carriers that will not provide any type of additional insured endorsement are Safco, Travelers, Hartford, Allied Mercury, First American Specialty, Encompass, MetLife, Kemper, CIG, State Farm, Allstate, and Ameriprise. And those are only the ones that the broker, who has done personal lines for over 20 years, and I know of. I understand from one of the homeowners that I've talked to, that he went to Fireman's Fund, which is what one, what I consider a very high-end carrier, and they said no. And that leaves very few carriers out there. And in fact, my broker informed me that probably the only way that this was gonna be able to be covered was to get a separate CGL policy. The estimated cost of doing that is $2,000 a year, on top of the increase of costs.
Thank you.
Could I continue, since I represent one of the associations? Usually, I'm given a little bit more time.
All right, two minutes.
Okay. When I talk about process, the basis for which you're undertaking these actions is SB 152, the Paveley Bill, a bill that according, that from all of my research, this city council did nothing to oppose, even though it substantially impaired the rights of the citizens of Newport Beach who own docks. The city of Huntington Beach actively opposed the bill and took some action. And so, I think we're all a little disappointed that that occurred. The other issues are so numerous with respect to the property taxes that we've paid on the docks. If the dock added an additional $1 million worth of value to the home, then you've received about $1,500 a year for every year that property tax has been paid. That is a fee. That is a fee as a result of that use of the tidelines, as a result of that additional use of the property. The commercial owners were given the opportunity to obtain an appraisal. We'd like to have that same opportunity. We simply have had no time. And that's why we've had no alternative but to request that during the vote parade, all the citizens with boats and who live on the harbor turn out their lights. It's our protest. It's all we can do to try to get this thing slowed down. All we're asking is to continue this until after the first of the year, until after we can all do our due diligence, until after I discussed with your city attorney the possibility of obtaining a blanket policy, and that some of the increased fees would be used to get a blanket policy, blanket insurance policy, that would cover both the dock owners and the city. It would be a win-win. If we work together, if we talk, if we go through the process, I think we can come up with something that works for everyone. But 10 days is not enough time. My insurance brokers have not been able to get back to me with enough information to really make any qualified decisions. So, the problem is, is when we rush to judgment, bad decisions get made, bad results occur. And so, I'm simply here to request that you continue this matter.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mayor, could I just, excuse me, Mayor, could I just make a comment on SB 152? That went on a straight-line party vote, and our legislator in this area did oppose it, so, any of the Orange County legislators that are Republicans opposed it, so, I just wanted to let you know that.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, my name's Bob Levin. I live on Valvola Island. I have a dock, been there for quite a few years. Listening to everybody's statements, they hit the nail on the head. I can't add anything to what they said, except please pay attention to everything that was brought up tonight, because it really hit everybody straight. And I have one thing to say today, I read the Daily Pilot today, and they had an article about the Christmas Boat Parade, and how great it's gonna be, et cetera, et cetera. And on my block, all the Davids have made up their mind, they're gonna turn their Christmas lights off when the boat parade is on, which makes a nice, better boat parade, so we have a very nice cohesive community, which has been divided up really badly, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please, if there's anyone else, please line up and be prepared. Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Miller, Newport Island. I think what the people are asking, Mayor Gardner, I know you to be a good person, if, when you get off city council, and the city council then spends money on things nobody else wants, you're gonna have to pay. All right? And they're asking you, what would you do about it? I also know people on fixed incomes who can lose their homes over these taxes. You could be in the same situation. They could raise water rates, whatever they can raise to get the money for spending that you don't want. And that's the problem. That's what's occurring here. $156 million for city hall, where we had all the money. Apparently, Newport Beach needs more money. Your appraisers appear to be making a mistake. This house right here, gentleman who's on a fixed income, who could lose his home, the appraisers say that this home right here could rent his dock for the same that this person could, his 20-foot dock. That's ludicrous. I mean, it makes no sense whatsoever. Sand beach, beautiful neighborhood, many of these commercial docks that they're using for comparison have bathrooms, all kinds of amenities. This house won't rent for the same thing. You walk around this house right here, walk around the dock, and the water's up to your waist, except at high tide. Then you gotta walk on your, if you go to this house when it's high tide, you can watch the water go up to his door. And yet, the appraisers say, these should be rented for the same, should be charged the same. That's ludicrous. Larry Lifer is an appraiser. He actually worked for one of the appraisers, Netzer, and he says we should use the State Lands Commission benchmark for converting birthland to rental area. And then he lists out a foundation, he just doesn't include Newport Island should be, you should use the same, same rates. He lays out a foundation for it. He says, I believe there's a significant difference in the value of a private dock in terms of proximity to the harbor mouth, boat height, restrictions due to overhead limits on bridges, and mean water depths. The bridge over here that leads to Newport Island, at one time, was being rebuilt, and the people on Newport Island said, we have sailboats, we'd love to be able to sail out to the main ocean. And the city said, no.
Thank you.
So, we can't, we can't, we can't rent to all those people who own sailboats.
All right. Thank you.
I think that's what Mr. Lifer's talking about here.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next, please.
My name's Domenica Christagia. I live on Marcus Avenue, and I live on Marcus Avenue, Domenica Christagia, and I agree, behind our homes, we're basically end of the line, and it's a sewer down there. And maybe it's time we start asking questions, since we're paying very high property taxes to live there, and this is, you know, apparently, you guys are in charge of our water back there. Maybe we can see some money being spent on that, and I'm not real confident in what money's been spent on so far by City of Newport Beach. I think it's shameful to look at a brand-new city hall for a price tag of approximately $135 million. Wow, was this put out for a competitive bid? Amazing. So, I researched a few other city halls in Orange County, Buena Park, $7 million. Laguna Hills, $7 million. Laguna Nigal, $25 million. Where did we come with $135 million? Wow. So, I'm not feeling really confident on City of Newport Beach spending money. So, you know, if you're gonna be coming at us, we're gonna be coming right back at you. So, it's shameful, because we have residents, majority of them, on a fixed income. I am like the youth of my neighborhood at close to 50, okay? Many of them can't even come to these meetings, because they're too elderly and frail. This is shameful. Shameful. Prop 13 was to protect them, and this is a loophole. I don't care what you wanna call it, it's a tax, it's a fee, and I don't know how you sleep at night.
Thank you. Next, please.
How you doing? My name's Brian Harrington. I live at 3704 Channel Place. I'm actually Larry's neighbor. I rent my property, and actually, I always kinda wanted to speak on that point of, you know, if this does go through, as a tenant, I mean, it's already, the rates for renting property in Newport Beach is astronomical as it is, comparatively speaking, but we pay for our location. Now, adding an unnecessary fee to, for dock space that you are basically glomming it in as commercial property, I don't rent out my dock to anybody. I just, I rent my house, and I have a dock in the front, which I'm gonna obviously be subject to this. If this passes, the rates for, are gonna get passed to the homeowner, which are in turn gonna be passed to me, which are gonna put me in a position of, am I gonna be able to afford to stay in this house that I've been renting in Newport Beach since I was 18 years old? So, I just wanted to speak to the point of the renters, and not just the homeowners. This affects everybody. This doesn't just affect homeowners. This doesn't just affect commercial people that could lose their business. I mean, there's businesses that, the electric Duffy rental places, they're not gonna be able to afford the insurance on this, they're not gonna be able to afford the tax increase on this, they're barely making it as it is. We're making decisions on, that are gonna affect businesses, where Newport Beach is trying to do its best to bring business back to Newport Beach, and this is gonna take business away from Newport Beach, because they're not gonna be able to stay in business to be able to make enough revenue to be able to afford that space. So, I just wanted to speak to the renters and other people in the area that are gonna be affected by this. I think it's absolutely astronomical, and I do agree with you, that Prop 13 was supposed to protect in regards to fees, and this is, this is a loophole, and I completely agree with it, and I'm hoping that everybody else sees it that way as well. But as a tenant, I'm not a homeowner, I do rent, but I am in the potential of losing my property if my landlord decides to pass that increase onto me. So, I'm hoping that that doesn't happen.
Thank you.
Sir, before you go, because you're actually the first renter I think we've heard from as a committee. How much rent are you paying for your home? If you don't mind, I mean, it's.
I don't mind. I got a four-bedroom place over there. I pay $41.25 a month.
$41.25 a month. Okay, that's all I wanna know.
So, but I mean, it's, obviously, with this increase in the dock fee, that's gonna obviously increase to, maybe, $2,000, $3,000 a month? Who knows? So, whatever the owners wants to pass on to me.
I believe that the docks on Newport Island are roughly in the $500 a year range, so.
I wish I could find a dock for $500 a year.
No, that's what we'll be charging the landowner. What he charges you, that's his business, but clearly, it won't be $2,000 or $3,000.
Again, if it's a flat all the way across, I can't even get, my boat's pretty small. I couldn't have a large boat on there, so, again, I'm just speaking to the renters, and this will increase my rent, and, you know.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I have two comments about this. First is that in explaining the so-called fair market rent requirement on page three of the staff report, and on one of the city manager's slides at the beginning of the evening, they cited California Constitution, Article 16, Section 6, which is the clause that prohibits gifts of public funds. I have a personal confusion about this, because about a year ago, Assistant City Attorney Michael Torres told the members of our Special Events Advisory Committee that they didn't have to worry about making gifts of public funds, because that prohibition did not apply to city governments. That's confused me considerably, and I'm wondering if we've come to a new understanding that that prohibition against making gifts of public funds does apply to us. My second comment is about the Ad Hoc Committee on Harbor Charges, which according to the first page of the two resolutions that are before you tonight, or will be on December 7, 11, says it was formed on July 27, 2010, and from the discussion we've heard, it appears that that committee works on refining your recommendations between the public meetings. I don't wanna embarrass anybody about this, but I think we take pride in conducting ourselves in an open and transparent way, and part of that, when it comes to government affairs, is that everybody understands the rules we're operating under, and that they're clearly written down somewhere. My problems with this are the enabling resolution under which that committee was founded in 2010, so that the committee's operation would terminate on March 31, 2011, and indeed, at the end of 2011, it disappeared from the clerk's roster of active committees. Yet, the quarterly business report put out by the city, released last night, indicates it's still an active committee, and oddly, it says that the membership is council members Selig, Hill, and. Selich, Hill, Hen, and Rosansky. Yet, as we've heard with Councilman Selich needing to recuse himself, the membership seems oddly to have changed. So I guess what I'm wondering is why this committee was never formally extended, who the current members are, how they were selected, and if we don't know for sure who is on the committee, how we know that a quorum of the city council has not been reaching a consensus tentatively outside of the public meetings? I think clarification of how the committee is operating and what the written rules are that govern it would be useful between now and December 11, so that we all know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Tom Johnson. I live at Diana Lane, which is far away from the water. I empathize with both the council for having to handle this difficult situation, and also for many of you that live on the waterfront and are facing these, you know, these potential costs. I'm up here tonight because I'm one of, I'm, I'm what's, I'm part of the Commodore Club of Newport Beach, and we're a volunteer group that puts on the Christmas Boat Parade. And I just wanna remind you, when people get up here and talk about a boycott of the Christmas Boat Parade and everything like that, you talk about people with hardship that are facing these costs. If you decide to boycott the Christmas Boat Parade, you will not be hurting one person up here on the dais. I'll tell you who you'll be hurting. You'll be hurting restaurant owners that depend on selling seats in their busiest time of the year. You'll be harming other outlets that provide viewing points where people can display. You'll be harming catering companies that do parties in people's backyards for the celebrations. You will be harming tour boats on the harbor that count on this. So I appreciate your concern, and I appreciate the gathering of all of you to show your support for this issue. I think it's misplaced in putting it against a volunteer group that's trying to put on a world-class act that brings great attention to Newport Beach.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right. If there's anybody else, please come forward.
My name is Kathleen Edmond, and I live at 3810 Channel Place. Excuse me. I didn't come prepared to speak tonight, but obviously, Balboa Coves, Marcus, Channel Place, 38th Street, many of the homeowners from those areas did, excuse me, from Newport Island, and I just wanted to say thank you very much.
All right. Is there any other public comment? If there's anyone else, please come forward.
Carol Seenor, Balboa Peninsula.
Microphone.
Carol Seenor, Balboa Peninsula. I am just livid. I am embarrassed. I've been here for 50 years, own property here for over 50 years. I've lived in the property for over 40 years. I feel, I've been a very good custodian. I live on a street end. I take care of the city's street end. I've been doing it since I was 16 years old. I pick up trash. I used to be able to dredge. I can't dredge now, because I have eelgrass, because I do have a drainage there that drains for four blocks either way, including the oceanfront. I get all the garbage from the fire pits. It's been usually around my house in two feet of water when it floods, when the ocean overflows, and that's happened twice since the city hasn't put up berms. My problem is, I understand that the permit needs to be raised. I understand that... Raise our permit. With all this rigmarole, and the thousands of dollars, and the appraisals, and all of this stuff that you've been dealing with, it was not necessary. And what really bothers me is the fact that why are 970 residents and property owners the only ones that are supposed to pay for the infrastructure of the whole darn harbor? That's what I don't get, and that's what really bothers me. Everybody inside Balboa Island, everybody in Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, Orange County, the nation, the world uses our seawalls. They walk around Balboa Island. Everybody uses the area. There should be a citywide situation. This should not be put on the backs of 970 waterfront residents. Our street end is also a launch ramp for boats under 18 feet. The public is there every day. I welcome that. When I used to dredge, I gave the city two feet of nice new sand up on our street end that covered the drainage pipe. Now the drainage pipe is exposed by this much. That's a city liability. And I used to call the city, go, "Oh, it's about time that I dredge," and I paid for it for you guys, because you're gonna have some trip out here pretty soon, and they're gonna hurt themselves. You know, I don't get it. 970 people should not support all of this, and it's just, I am livid.
I would point out that through the general funds that we expend on the harbor, that people in Harborview Hills, and the Port Streets, and Bonita Canyon, all contribute to the maintenance of the harbor and the infrastructure of the harbor. Now, is there any other public comment?
No. No.
No more public comment?
How do they contribute?
Through the general fund. We put millions of dollars into the general fund, which is where my property taxes, I'm not on the water, my property taxes go, and I'm saying, "Hey, we should, we should." But I don't have private use of a public waterway, as a dock does, which is...
Can I say something more?
No, you've had your moment.
One little thing. What I wanna say is the fact that everybody that lives on the bay and owns a dock, they have an attractive nuisance in their front yard. I've been told this by my insurance companies. It's like having a swimming pool, and even though you have six-foot wall around your swimming pool, if somebody falls, climbs over, and drowns in your swimming pool, you're...
All right. Thank you very much.
So you can't keep people off our dock. So you can't tell me it's just for my private use.
All right. Thank you.
Okay? And you guys need to be responsible, too.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, I'll bring it back. Is there anybody on the council who'd like to say anything?
Well, it seems to me that, you know, all these folks have come out here to take their time and have their input, and there were a number of issues and questions raised, has, and that it probably would be good, if we have enough time yet this evening, before we really get to council deliberation, to see if staff would answer some of the questions and issues that were raised. I made a list. Maybe, can we take a few minutes and deal with that while the folks that came out here tonight are here, so they can get the benefit of some response?
Yes, Mr. Hen, and maybe we'll do that between myself and City Attorney Harp, and maybe Chris Miller, 'cause we all took notes.
So did I, and I'll fill in.
Okay. I'm gonna go down basically by name, and I do appreciate everyone's patience. We're not always able to respond while you're speaking, but we are taking, I think, pretty good notes. Mr. Needleman and a couple of others talked about we shouldn't be charging on all four sides of the dock, and we believe that's true, too. And the proposal should always reflect rental of usable space. So that may change, depending on where you are in the harbor. You may only have one side that's usable, and the middle slip, and we need to reflect that in the permit. At least, that would be staff's recommendation. So I'm gonna keep thumbing down my list here.
In conjunction with that, Dave, someone mentioned charging for sand, and that there's sand between the bulkhead and the dock.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Seymour Beek raised that question, and that was a good question. That would not be in the permit area, where you have that expensive...
So we're not charging for that sand.
Correct. Correct. Mr. Leifer did submit a great email with a lot of good questions, and I did pass that along to Mr. Netzer, and he responded. I'm gonna post that response on the website. And he, just to make it very clear, this isn't a proposed lease agreement. This is an annual peer permit, similar to what this annual renewal process that you're able to do today. If folks did want a longer-term agreement, I suppose we'd entertain that on an individual basis, but the committee's recommendation was that most people would prefer keeping the annual permit. Just out of show of hands, who would rather have a permit, and who would rather have a lease? The permit is what you have today. You'd rather have a five-year lease or a 10-year lease instead of the annual renewable permit?
It doesn't make sense to you.
I'm just asking a question. You don't have to answer. Okay. Thank you.
If the permit's $100 a year...
I'd rather have a nine, nine-year lease. If you're gonna claim the property as a city property, or a state property, whatever, and what's bottom property...
Just, let me keep going down my list here. Mr. Kenny brought up promontory bay, talked about perpetual easements, and the term I kept using was "may," and I think Mr. Kenny is right. We just need to have more legal review of that, and I don't know that the city attorney's had a good time to look at that. Maybe you have, Aaron, and you can comment on that. But my apologies for using "may." Mr. Randolph, Mr. Randolph in Channel Place raised a possibility that the property associated with his, his home was not tidelands. We will look at that. If there's, if you own the property into the water, we'll make sure that we're not charging you to rent that. That's, that's consistent with what we've said the whole time. So we'll look at that. I'm still just thumbing through, 'cause a number of people just made comments rather than asking questions. Go ahead, Aaron.
Just briefly, back to the "may" issue and the easement. I don't believe we've been provided with a copy of the easement, and I think that's why the word "may" was in there. If someone could provide us the copy, we'd be happy to take a look at that and verify that information for you.
So, Mr. Kenny, if you're still here, I'll work with you on that to make sure we see that. Actually, I think you have sent it over to me before, but we'll, we'll take a second look at that. I may have not gotten it to Aaron. Ms. Lindsay is in Balboa Coves, and same thing. If your property is, if your dock is over private property, we will not charge you rent. If it is over city tidelands, that's where the rent begins. A number of people raised the insurance issue. I know Councilmember Hen and others will comment further on that, and their beliefs there. There is a revised committee recommendation about that, that, that there not be a specific... Well, I'll wait and let the council members talk about that. Sorry, I'm still going through my notes here. Mr. Revelli, again, had a similar concern about side ties, and also, he raised the issue of a cap on the CPI, and that may be something the council might wanna consider, a ceiling of that. So I think that was an interesting suggestion there. Okay. Mr. Coop raised a number, a number of issues, including who would do this work. We do think it will involve a lot of staff time to set everyone up on this permit with the defined square footage. We don't think it will involve new staff. It'll just involve refocusing our current staff for that time. And then, once that's in place, Chris sees the dock remodels anyway. He has to approve those, so we would just adjust the permit if your dock was remodeled at that point. So no new department, no new folks. Ms. Thaggard raised the issue of Senate Bill 152, and I believe Councilmember Daigle noted that our representatives were opposing that in the first place, so... Correct, and I'm, I'm gonna let you cover that issue, too, Aaron. Ms. Christagia, and I apologize, I may be mispronouncing your last name. The Civic Center project was competitively bid. It's not, and you gave a lot of interesting cost numbers of other city halls, and I, no one, no one listens to me on this, and I understand, I respect that. It's a big deal project, but when you, when you see it, we expanded the library, and we built two huge parks and a parking structure, and we graded $7 million of, of land out of that. It's much more than a city hall. It was competitively bid. People will still dislike it. I understand that. Some people will love it, but... Mr. Harrington, I think Mr. Rosansky and Mr. Harrington had a good dialogue about what might happen to his rent. When I look at the footprints for that Newport Island area, I do come up with $400 to $500 a year. So divide that by the months, and that's about the potential increase to that rent, if the landowner is passing it through directly. Mr., I'm gonna let Aaron comment on Mr. Mosher's comment about gifts of public funds, because there is a nuance to that, that the city attorney has been consistent on. That's all I had in terms of answers.
Yes, and just briefly to follow up on a few points that you raised. You raised the Senate Bill 152, which reflected in the government code. The fair market rental value requirements that are associated with that are really for state land, so that, that portion of the government code does not apply to city lands. It only applies to the state. And then, Mr. Mosher raised an issue regarding the gift of public funds, and he claimed that Assistant City Attorney Michael Torres was inconsistent in regards to that issue. The point here is that the City of Newport Beach is managing state tidelands, so we're managing the property on behalf of the state. When you're managing property on behalf of the state, there's a requirement that we receive fair market value for the rental of that property, and he's absolutely right, that if we did charge fair market value for that property, it could be considered a gift of public funds. So there's no difference or discrepancy in the analysis there. And then, I personally know that Mr. Selich has not participated in the committee meetings. It's been very consistent with Mr. Rosansky, Mayor Gardner, and Councilmember Hen, and so there's been no violation of the Brown Act. I believe that was all the issues Mr. Mosher raised, unless you had any others.
Councilman Hen.
I did make a few other notes here, and appreciate staff going through that list. I do think we need to ask the appraisers to respond to this issue that's been raised about the lack of availability of a form of permit or lease, and whether or not that invalidates their appraisal or should be somehow cause a reconsideration. We need to have the appraisers respond to that point, between now and December 11. There was a point raised about we should only charge for the space the boat uses. I understand why you might think that way. The problem is that there is a total pier out there. That pier and the float are a use of a public asset, the tidelands. That whole float and that whole pier is a use of the tidelands. Whether you choose to use a small portion of that is up to you, but it is a use of a public asset as to the fixed installation that's in place. And so it would not be appropriate just to charge for the space the boat uses, and in any event, it would be administratively impossible to keep track of something like that, as boats come and go. There was a question raised about, it seems grossly unfair that the improvements might revert to the city if the permit is terminated or not renewed. Unfortunately, that's the way the law works. When you build something over land owned by someone else, you run the risk of forfeiting that improvement if you fail to keep it. And that's just the way the law works. It works that way on ground leases, in and out, all, all the time, every day, all year long, all over the world, at least all over the United States. You run that risk. This is no different than that. This is an improvement made over property owned by someone else. So while the permit does make it more clear that that's the case, all it's really doing is stating what the law is, anyway. Am I correct about that, Aaron?
Yes, you're absolutely correct.
Okay. So it's not changing anything. It's just a statement of how the law works. There was an issue of, raised by the Marcus Avenue property owner, I don't recall his name, that the city, when it begins this permanent process, becomes a landlord, and that that changes the city's responsibilities and gives the city more responsibility as a landlord. I'm pretty sure that's not the case, because the city, the city has been doing these permits for years and years and years. The charge has only been $100, but the charge has been there all along. But I would like the city attorney to comment on whether the institution of these increased fees does change the city's role or responsibility in respect of the point that was raised.
Councilmember Hen, it does not change the city's liability or position.
So the city does not accrue more responsibility, more cost, or whatever? So the city does not accrue more responsibility, more cost, or whatever is associated with this?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. I do want to come back on this insurance issue. This is one that was raised. It's a, it's a validation in my mind of the public input process. There were important issues raised regarding the insurance. Actually, I learned some things along the way. But let me make a few things clear. It's very clear that if you have insurance on your home and it includes liability coverage, that liability coverage extends to an, to a dock that you own. The difficulty here is the city also proposed a hold harmless. And that hold harmless then, or that indemnity, in conjunction with the requirement to have insurance, liability insurance, does cause angst for an insurance company to cover that. Certainly, they would not be interested in naming the city as a named insured. There was no request or requirement to name the city as an insured. All that's said in the permit was that you have to have liability insurance, which I'm pretty sure any prudent homeowner would have. So the real issue boils down to the hold harmless or the indemnity clause. And it appears to me that that was a bridge too far. And that's one of the issues that we're going to have to take up here in between now and December the 11th. Should we eliminate the indemnity or the hold harmless? I can just tell you for myself for now, I'm leaning, I'm leaning in favor of eliminating that hold harmless. And if that happens, this whole issue about $2,000 insurance bills goes away. It just goes away, because the only thing that's left is a requirement that you maintain liability insurance. You can do that. I'm sure you already do. There will be no additional costs. The city is not asking you to be, to name the city as a named insured. It's not asking you to raise your limits. It's not asking you to do anything more than what you are already doing as a, as a prudent homeowner. So, you know, that remains to be seen. We need to think about it, but I'm just letting you know where, where I think the wind blows on that issue. There was an issue raised about allowing rentals, and I appreciate the lady that said that she's concerned about her next-door neighbor running to a big vote and spoiling her view. There's another issue of fairness, though, associated with this, and that has to do with the business owners and the marina owners in the, in the harbor, who, unfortunately for them, and in a difficult process, we've raised rents on the commercial marina operators as well. It certainly is not fair for residential homeowners to be able to use a public asset for little or no cost and rent it out and expect the commercial marinas to pay a fair market rate and then not expect a homeowner who acts like a commercial marina by renting out his dock to not pay a fair rate. So I just, I'm only raising this, not, I'm not raising it to be argumentative. I'm raising it to make sure you understand that there are, this is like a prism that you turn around, and every angle you look through it, you get a different perspective. That's a different perspective that we have to take account of. The fa, the perspective of fairness to other harbor users and the costs that they incur. With regard to this issue of residential dock owners being the only ones paying for all of the zillions of dollars that we spend on the harbor and whatnot, that's, that's really not true. I just mentioned that the commercial business users and marina operators in the harbor, we've just concluded a whole process there. Moorings have changed. The rents on the, the city-operated marina at Balboa Yacht Basin, those have changed. This is a long process. We've been at it two years. We've been, we are trying to do this piece by piece in a way that's fair and respectful to all. And at the end of this process, we are going to have a look back. We're going to look at the path that we've traveled and try to reassure ourselves that the individual decisions we've made along the way still seem fair when compared one to another, that there is internal fairness to these decisions taken as a whole. And so we are going to do that. I don't know at this juncture if that'll result in any changes from the decisions that we've made, but we are going to make that as an honest effort to try and make sure that we've done this right. And this runs to the issue of why you're in such a big rush. Take your time, study it a lot longer. We are going to move forward and make a decision here in an expeditious way, understanding that there will still be this process at the end, this look back, to try to be sure that we've made the individual decisions in the fairest and best way. Any decision that we make along the way here, we made it, we can change it.
Mr. Hen, as you're looking down, I wanted to follow up with you, as you did, on the other sources of funds that go into that. And I, I think people forget how much, how hard we've tried, including especially Councilmember Daigle, to secure state and federal funding for what is a huge dredging need in the harbor. A $25 million project, $48 million up in the Upper Bay. That was entirely funded through state grant dollars. The federal project, we got, what, I think, 2.2, Chris, or for, for that, from the federal government, which I, I considered a remarkable achievement in light of what the federal government is going through right now to secure that. So we, we've been very aggressive in trying to look in, look elsewhere. And please know that that's the city's commitment to share that and share, because the responsibilities of the waterways are not just the city's. So we're very aggressive about doing that.
Thank you for that, Dave. Following on to that with one more point. I know even a few hundred dollars a year for some folks is an important number. I don't mean to minimize this at all. But what we are about here is for each participant to pay what is fair for that participant. And I can tell you that the total, the total sum of all of that doesn't hold a candle, doesn't come close to picking up the overall cost of maintaining and improving this harbor over time. We, the city has already organized $15 million of spending to dredge the harbor for the benefit of all. That money, other than the federal and state, or the county and federal money that Dave mentioned, $10 million of that came out of the city's general fund. Taxpayers living all over the city contributed to that project for the benefit of everybody that's got a dock in the harbor. So I don't mean to minimize the importance of this to anyone. I just want to try and make sure you have some amount of perspective on the totality of what's going on in the harbor today. I, I only have one or two more points here, and then I'll be quiet. We did, someone did mention the Grand Canal. We do have some piers, and I forget what the term was. It's the first time I've heard it, about the piers in the Grand Canal. We are going to have to have a look at those and more than likely do a calculation of the square footage of those and the stairs going down, and it won't amount to a lot of money. But again, in terms of fairness, we're going to have to have a look at that. We, someone mentioned the tidelands management committee. We just had a meeting today before this meeting took place, wherein the tidelands management committee is trying to, with the input of citizens that work with that committee, come up with a structure that will secure these increases in revenues to be spent in, in a way that will assure that the increases in revenue paid by users in the harbor are spent on improvements in the harbor for their benefit, so that this money, this increased money can't get frittered away in the city's general fund or towards some other project that's got nothing to do with the harbor. We are going to conclude that. It's the last work item for the tidelands management committee before its mandate expires. And we're going to make sure about that, so that you can at least have confidence that the increased money that you're paying will run to the benefit of the harbor over time.
Of the harbor, not the tidelands. In other words, not the coast, not the coastal beaches, just the harbor those increases would be sequestered for, so that's... Well, right now, that's been a complaint, that some of this money is used just to support our beaches and everything. And they say, well, if these increases are coming out of the harbor, they just stay in the harbor. This is what we've heard, and this is what we're trying to do. If that's not the message we've heard, then I've heard wrong, but that was a concern of, of most people.
I only have one other comment to make, and that is that, you know, there's this issue, these are large increases for many folks. And I, I don't, I don't want it to be lost on the folks that are here, that the appraisers said we should charge 50 or 55 cents on the whole footprint of water in front of your property, going all the way out to the end of your pier, property line to property line. That's what the appraisers concluded. These are independent appraisers. They've got no axe grind one way or the other. We didn't instruct them what answer they should give. That's what they concluded. This committee, in a sense of fairness, modified that recommendation, that result from the appraiser, to only include the usable area around the dock. That was a substantial downward modification of cost from what we received by way of independent appraisers. It's still left with a lot of money. I understand that. I just don't want it to be lost on you, that we have really tried to think hard about how to fairly apply this in a way that's appropriate. So, all right, I'm...
All right. The two things that, that in addition that I, I heard, and I heard, I think were excellent points. Well, not one, one is an excellent point. The other is something, just confirm what I feel. I think that our, we should not be renting residential piers. I think that the, for, in the residential areas particularly, forget the competition, which I think is a factor, but the traffic issue, that, that a neighbor thinks he's living in a residential area and suddenly there's a practically a little commercial marina outside, I think that's unfair. So I will be working to just keep the status quo there. But I, I think that something that I would like to see, and I'm not sure what the numbers would be, but I think this, this idea of not going with a CPI but going with a, a fixed amount, not to exceed, I think that's a very good idea and something that I would like to, to see in a future proposal.
CPI-based but not to exceed a certain amount?
Yes, uh-huh.
So it wouldn't just pick a, it wouldn't automatically go up?
No, I don't know that we would pick...
It went down, for instance?
Yeah, yeah, if it went down, that...
It would go down.
We had, no, we really don't want it to go down, because that means the economy's in the toilet. But, but if it did go down, the amount would go down. But, yeah, but definitely, I think that was an excellent point, that we forget that there are those periods where all of a sudden there's a huge inflation. So I think that's an important aspect.
Would you mind if we straw-voted some of the, those items that you're... I'm going to defer to the committee on that. I'm sorry? Okay. The ones on my list would be the rental issue, the CPI and a cap, and applying to that, removing the hold harmless. Aaron, do you have others?
I thought another good point that was raised, possibly that the council would like to address it, is maybe the Balboa Island, where part of the pier is accessible to the public?
Part of the pier itself, actually?
No, under the...
Or the sand is underneath it?
You can walk, you can play under the pier.
Still not supposed to climb on the pier.
My understanding was that the part of the pier may be acceptable.
No, no, I think he meant that, that you've got a high pier, I mean, a high, whatever, gangway. Gangway? Gangway? I'm not a boat person, I'm sorry. But you could play under the sand or something, so that shouldn't be, that's still public usage.
So at least those three issues.
All right, and we have Mayor Fortem Curry. Do you have some?
What's the rental issue?
The rental issue is should, should the Muni Code be changed to allow rentals? If so, what would, should the, should there be the same 52 and a half? Or small commercial marina rate is $1.26 a square foot? And should it apply to that portion that's being rented? For instance, if that was side-by-side, a person's own boat that might be at 52 and a half, which is an interesting administrative issue.
Yeah, okay. Mayor Fortem Curry?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, I think the comments made relative to the insurance by Ms. Thagard, I think, were, were very well taken, and, and the impacts of the indemnification provisions. You know, I think we over-lawyered that whole document, sort of like we did the commercial lease initially in the first draft of that. So I think we ought to separate those issues and take that off the table for now and spend however long it takes to craft whatever kind of permit people need to have a dock and take away, you know, we've gone for 107 years without having this. We'll go longer without it. And, and take that out of the equation. I, I think those, that's just muddying the issues. It's adding additional costs and bureaucracy that I don't think we need. So I would, I would hopefully look at that, and we can straw-poll that in a moment. I actually think people ought to have the right to rent their docks, because I think it helps offset these costs for people. Frankly, we don't know how many people are out there renting their docks already. And it may be a significant number. I don't know that it's going to have, frankly, a significant impact on parking. They should pay the small commercial rate, because I think it's an asset for folks. If we're going to charge them, because they have an asset, we ought to allow them to use the asset. I don't, I don't know. That depends on your, your lease. If you... I, I, well, we'll get through that in a minute. The question was raised about, I also, by the way, agree with Mayor Gardner on her approach to the, the adjustments. Sort of a capped CPI approach. I think that would be a better way to go. I'd like some more discussion about the 10-foot issue. I'm not sure that I fully understand enough to believe that's the fully fair way to go. I think we've really worked on that definition very well. I think the committee's done a good job on that. I just, I'd like to see if that definition can be tightened up a little bit more, so that people are actually paying fees for what they're actually using. Let me make a comment about the idea that the rest of the city's not, what is the rest of the city paying? Tuesday, we, yesterday, we approved a $29 million five-year capital program for our harbor area to make improvements. The dredging has been substantially funded from the general fund, which comes from people all over the city. People who visit our city and stay in our hotels provide $14 million a year in revenue to our city. So we do generate a lot of revenue from a lot of other people who, who go to support what we do here in our city, plus sales tax. We generate 20-plus million dollars in sales tax, much of that from people who don't live in the city but who come here and buy automobiles or eat in our restaurants or shop in Fashion Island. So, so we do generate revenue from other people. You know, I went to campaign school, so I know how to make loaded language. And calling something a tax until you've convinced yourself it's a tax is, is, you know, what they teach people to do. But at the end of the day, if anybody here were to take a trailer and put it on the beach and then either live in it or charge people to live in it, the rest of you here would be up in arms, because that's a public facility out there, a public asset, and someone's using it for their own commercial use, and you'd all be offended by that. And I don't want to say it's, it's a directly analogous situation, but it's public water that everybody's dock is on. It belongs to the people, and we have a responsibility under state law to protect it and use it in a way that's consistent with state law. And that's what we're doing here. So, you know, calling it a tax, you can call it a tax all you want, but, you know, the situation is what it is, and it's rent for the public water. Ma'am, I understand. I'm people too. The issue is, is what the law says, and that's what it is. So I would support those reforms.
All right. Any other comments or suggestions from the council? All right, so, no? Yes, we're going to straw vote. I just want, if there's, anybody else want to have anything else for a discussion right now?
In terms of the straw votes, although I can support excluding certain areas, I, I do have a basic concern with a, with a rental amount. And when I think about this whole issue, you know, two main activities of government are taking and regulating. And when you go back to the, to what happened with the Senator's bill, you know, that was caused when the state of California basically wanted to confiscate more money from the people of California, and they weren't able to do that, and so they needed some legislation for all the lakes and Tahoe and Southern California. And so that was established, that there would be a fair market rate, though it doesn't say, it doesn't sort of have a formula for that. And then at the city, we can do fair market rate, but there is no formula. And if you hire five different appraisers, you're going to get five different answers. And so I know members of the community, when we did the commercial increases, which I voted against, had requested George Jones, for example, and he, he's a reputable appraiser whose reputation is to come in with low numbers. So part of the rents is, you know, have we, have we used appraise, are there appraisers out there that can get lower numbers? Because as I see it, it's, the burden is on the state of California to disprove our numbers. It's a political choice, but we could take the position of let's go for the lowest number and try and defend ourselves against the state of California. So there's another way to look at this as well. So in terms of exclusions, I'm willing to exclude certain areas, but I want to state that that doesn't mean I'm approving in some tacit way the rent.
I understand.
Thank you.
You want to go through a couple of the items, then?
Yeah.
Easy one. What I would propose is the CPI be capped at 3%, the version that would come back to you on December 11th. For the council. You guys can pick a lower number if you'd like.
Well, I just, I would like to comment on that, because there is a sort of an analogous...
Well, I just, I would like to comment on that, because there is a sort of analogous situation. I mean, we have the beachfront encroachments, and those people are paying CPI, and they've come at the city many times here and asked for caps on that, and we've said no. So I don't know why this would be any different. And certainly, 3% is a very low cap.
No, it's way too high.
Well, I'm sure anything would be way too high for most people, but--
If you're a property owner in California--
We really do need to limit this discussion to the council, this will all be aired again.
What I would say is, if we are going to consider some type of a cap on the CPI, that we also consider some type of a mechanism where these rents are reevaluated every so often, so that we do, are at fair market value, which is what we're supposed to be charging, not artificially increase or decrease the rent.
It was my impression that that is part of the proposal, that there would be a periodic fair market value reappraisal--
That's correct.
Right, but I don't think we ever really--
We haven't set a specific regimen.
So maybe that's something that committee needs to come back with a recommendation on.
Okay, Councilman Deagle?
I did have one question, because I really appreciate the mayor's comments earlier about how an adjustment was made, and you dropped the, sort of the money area of it, and even though the appraisal, the appraiser recommended something else, then how does the city defend that? In the sense of, why can't we come up with all kinds of ways to set a fee?
Mayor, if you want, Aaron, if you want to chime in on the guidance. The guidance is, what would the city use to establish fair market value? I think that's your question, Councilmember.
Right, well, we're excluding an area that an appraiser, it says you get an appraisal and it's from an appraiser, the appraiser said you charge for it, the committee's recommendation, which I support, which is a good one, which is make an adjustment, so how do we defend ourselves on that?
Make the areas, we said make the area smaller.
Right.
So we've already gone, the point is, we've already said, okay, we're changing what the appraiser said, so.
Right. So how much local determination is involved with this?
Well, the city council is free to set the fair market value based upon the appraisals, and there is a lot of information that's out there that is taken into consideration. You have the appraisals, and you have other information that's been presented to you. So I think that the city council, in determining what is the fair market value, has some discretion, but they do need to rely upon the appraisals as sort of a basis and guidance, but they can consider other information.
We did the same thing for the commercial rents. We used discretion in the setting of those rates.
So I'm hearing one objection to a cap at 3%, unless you, Councilmember Rosansky, unless it applies to the other uses that, like an oceanfront encroachment, but--
Well, I'm just, you know, we're talking about going back after we're done, and reevaluating the process, and equalizing it, or looking at it in the context of all the other decisions that were made, and seeing, you know, were we fair here to these people in light of what we did other places? I mean, the discussion came up tonight as to whether or not it's fair to let residential pier owners rent their dock when you have commercial guys now that are now competing with you, and you're paying a lower fee than what they're paying. Is that fair? And so that's part of this fairness issue, that I imagine that and other questions will come up. Well, I don't know that in any of the actions that we've taken with any of the other peers, any of the other tenants of the city, that we've capped, or put any kind of a CPI cap. Some of them adjust based on fair market value of a basket of marina rates that go up and down every year, presume reflective somewhat of CPI, although not, not totally. We have moorings, I think, and the Balboa yacht basin fees are, well, the yacht basin fees are based on a basket that goes up and down based upon what things are happening in the harbor. I think the moorings, don't they go up and down on CPI? I don't think we have a cap on that. And so, you know, I'm looking at the context of what we've done here in the past, and I say that, you know, we really need to think about that, because we may have to backtrack on that decision later on. And I'm sure these folks wouldn't want us to be backtracking on decisions.
Okay.
Well, so you, I don't, Councilman Hen, any thoughts?
I'm persuaded by Councilmember Rosansky's arguments about considering the whole panorama of decisions that we've made. I'm pretty sure we have CPI adjusters as to some component of almost all the decisions that we've made on these harbor uses.
Council, Mayor Protem Curry?
I would support the 3% cap.
I think that's high.
CPI up to three.
I think it's, I'm sorry, I just, three sounds high to me. Two.
I don't know that the straw vote will give us any guidance, maybe we'll just propose--
I'll go with two to help the mayor here, and maybe we'll roll some logs.
Mr. Hill or Ms. Deagle?
Yeah, I must admit, I came here today pretty peeved, and not willing to compromise on anything. And, you know, I have been personally attacked twice, and threatened twice, and I fall back often on my Reagan philosophies, and I don't negotiate with terrorists. And if people come in here to threaten the livelihood of Newport Beach, 970 residents, when we have 85,000 residents that we represent at this table, it just makes me really angry also. And so I walked in here tonight to say, I'm ready to vote, and I'm ready to vote right now. I will admit that I was very persuaded by some of the conversations that I heard tonight. I actually came prepared not to listen, but unfortunately, I did. And I will say from that, that I think that, to my thinking, and I recognize this goes against some previous trends that we've talked about, but to me, this is a mentality of an extension of the protection that we have fought for and achieved for ourselves with respect to our cost of ownership of property. And so I guess that's a long way for me to come around to say that I would look at raising these rates over the five-year period to the established fair market value, but then I would cap it at 2%. I would cap it at a CPI no greater than 2% to tie it to the Prop 13 standard that we work for on our properties. So that's where I would come from on that, on that particular one.
Okay. Okay, well, to avoid gridlock, I'll go for two.
You're not committing yourself--
Yeah, nothing binds you--
Just a straw vote.
For the final vote, that just advises us to present something--
Before we leave this subject, we do need to make a running list of things that need to be addressed at the end of this process--
Right.
--as we look back. This is clearly one of them.
Right, so is the appraisal period, the time, next time. The issue of renting, I've heard two things, don't change the code to allow rental, change the code to allow rental, and then with a subset of that would be to charge the small commercial marina rate if you do choose to rent. Anyone want to weigh in?
That would be the straw vote that I would like to ask for, is whether or not we would agree to allow rental, but if you do, when you get your permit, you declare whether you intend to rent any of your dock, and if you do, your rental rate for your pier would be based upon the small commercial marina rate.
Please, again, this is a dialogue with the council. Mr. Rosansky? No?
All right, I've said, I would like to keep--
You're a no.
--the status quo, so I'm not in favor.
I would support that opposition.
The same as Mr. Hen noted?
Could you restate your--
An individual dock owner, residential dock owner, would have the option of renting their docks if, at the time they pull their permit, they declare that that's their intention, and then at that time, their dock rate would be based on the small commercial marina index.
Could we have a don't ask, don't tell?
Which presently is--
That's what we have right now.
Which presently is a dollar twenty-six. And oh, by the way, somebody that pulls a permit that says they're not going to rent it out, and then they do, well, we have code enforcement, and that'd be an issue for code enforcement.
So any other thoughts on that?
You know, for better or for worse, people are renting their docks anyway. They do it brazenly. I mean, there's, you see ads in the newspaper. And so I think that those who want to rent are renting, quite honestly. And I think some of you might even be shocked to even know that we have a law against renting the docks. Maybe not, I don't know. But, so I guess I come down in favor of, if you want to rent your dock, go ahead, but, you know, if you're going to compete with the commercial marinas and create extra burden on the streets, because people are, you're renting your dock, and you're, your tenant is parking out on the street, or, you know, you should at least pay the fair, well, the same rent as someone who is renting docks for a business. So I don't think that that's unfair, and I think that, you know, at the, every year when you receive your permit or your renewal, you'll have a box to check, I am not renting my pier, or I am renting my pier, and, you know, you'll sign it at the bottom, and we'll take you on your word for it, I guess. I mean, I hope that there'll be some type of enforcement, but at the end of the day, I think that that's, I don't really see too many more people renting their docks. Most people, you know, it's an inconvenience. I mean, you have people traping through, you can't get to the dock other than going through their house, or going through their side yard, and into their backyard. Most people just don't, for the, for the money that they can get, don't want the disruption. And the ones that do want the disruption, they're renting them anyway, so.
Can we clarify that the rental property, if someone like you that rents the house but has a dock? You're still not fair.
Let me--
You need to talk to your landlord, you're way off base.
Well, you know, he is a renter, and let me, let's address this situation for, or I want to make a comment based on his situation and other renters. You're a rent, I mean, we have people that rent these homes. If they're going to, if it's, maybe the permit needs to say, me or my tenant is going to use the dock for their own personal use, then they'll pay the 52 and a half cents. If the tenant or the landlord is, let's say he's going to rent you the house, but rent out the dock separately to try and make more money, which there are people who do that, I know there are people who do that, then they're going to pay the small marina rate. They have to pay the small marina rate. Now, you know, how that plays between the house renter and the dock renter, if it may be one of the same person, I mean, you're living on Newport Island, so your fee, the rental for that dock's going to be about $500 a year from $100 a year. So if you want to, if your landlord is going to pass through $33 a year because he's paying more, I mean, a month, because he's paying more, or any other tenant in the harbor, then that's what he's going to do. I mean, that's his right, he can charge you $100 more. We have nothing to say about it, because that's between the renter and the property owner, and the city's not going to get involved with that. He may find that he's, I mean, I think you said you're paying 41.25 a month, maybe that's top of the market anyway, and he's going to have to, the property owner will may have to eat that $500, because he can't pass it on to you, because at that point, you'll move, and he's going to have to find another tenant, and the next tenant will only pay $4,000 a month, and he'll be behind. So I think that, hopefully it addresses your situation, anybody else in that rental situation. I hope that the council agrees.
Do you have enough numbers here on this one?
Yeah, I don't think I'm going to get to enough numbers, but I got, we have enough to make a recommendation back to you, yes.
Okay.
It would be, I think we would propose that rentals be allowed at the small commercial marina rate.
Okay.
So two more issues, and one is a nuance to what Mayor Protem Curry talked about. Mayor Protem Curry talked about punting the insurance and hold harmless thing entirely forward. I think Mr. Hen talked about removing the hold harmless requirement and addressing it on December 11th, as you must have insurance, but you do not have to hold the city harmless. So I appreciate some guidance on which path there.
Yeah, and I just-- Well, with the caveat that I do think we need to examine this alternative that Christine Taggart raised with regard to an alternative plan, I guess, the way I'd straw-voted is, should we pen the issue of insurance to no later than, just that issue for the permit, to no later than March 1st of 2013?
By the time the next one's issued.
Yes, which is, which is the time at which the permits would be due for renewal, and the forms would have to be sent out, to give us time to evaluate this completely different alternative, which could actually be to benefit of dock owners, give us time to evaluate that for feasibility, or, you know, the insurance as it currently stands.
I have a question about this, staff. In one sense, at least in simplistic kind of a thought, quote-unquote, "all we're doing here is changing the rent that we're charging for the tidlands area that's under our responsibility by state." So in Mayor Protem Curry's words, is this a solution for which we don't have a problem? I mean, what, we've been, we've been charging $100 a month for years--
A year, $100 a year.
$100 a year. And has the, has the insurance, or lack of hold harmless, or any of these issues been a problem?
Well, that's a good question, Councilmember Hill, and we have been making an effort at the staff level to improve past practices that we feel are not adequately protective of the city and the taxpayer base. It was our suggestion that there actually be, instead of a ghost permit with the $100, there actually be a physical permit that people get, and that explains their rights and the city's rights. And I think, as others have said, that we may have gone quite a bit overboard on that. We do think it's important to address that the permitees should have insurance, without specifying the amount and where your head it is, without specifying that there's a requirement that the city be held harmless. I think, as Councilmember Hen is noting, punting that to no later than the 1st of March would allow us to research that further, and the next, the council's seated at that point to address that.
Mayor Protem Curry?
Well, I think, I think Councilmember Hen's recommendation sort of consisted with where I was going, is I don't think the indemnification thing works at all, and I think we ought to drop that, and I think people are reaching that conclusion. And if there is a blanket insurance that the city can facilitate that makes this work, going to March to work that out is probably a good thing, and if it's not, I'm not so sure, we need to impose insurance requirements on people individually, frankly.
Yeah, I--
So this gives us time to figure that out.
I think that if we are going to take any part of this and move it forward, we have to have a clear either-or. We will either have a good solution in terms of a city-funded policy or something, or we won't have it, this requirement. I don't think we should just have, just punt the whole thing vaguely, so people are living, going down to March and going, well, what the heck is going to happen with the insurance? So they will know it'll either be A or B.
So we'll try and address that with you on December 11th, so people will at least know what those options are that will be addressed later.
Yes.
So I think I'm clear there. One final issue, it's a fairly minor one, I think it's what Councilmember, Mayor Protem Curry raised, and that is the issue of what's dockable space. And Mr. Hen discussed this a little bit, too, in his comments. There's, I guess there's an issue of, do you put a boat, or three boats around the edge of your float, or do you have the capability to put three boats around the edge of your float, and what should you, what should we charge for? And I've looked at this like, if you have the capability to put that there, in other words, if it's going to stay out of the water the majority of the time, you could physically put a boat there, that should be in your permit area. But we shouldn't say, because you only have one boat, we will only reflect basically the footprint of that boat. So that's not staff's recommendation to just reflect the footprint of one, of whatever boat you might have.
You do the dock plus the boat.
It is dockable or usable space.
You weren't saying just the boat, the dock plus the actual boat?
Correct, sorry, correct, yeah. Apologize, that's a little bit unclear, but that's what we would continue to propose, unless there are strong objections to that, or any objections to that.
Well, I just, I think that we want to be as conservative as possible. We want to, we certainly do not want to measure anything that we do not feel is--
So as an example, if someone has no space to put anything on their side ties, that would not be in their permit area, and they wouldn't be charged for it.
Right.
Right.
And we're assuming that most of the backs of, most of the docks are not going to be able--
Right. Chris, do you have a comment?
Well, I was just going to ask for clarification, if there are some docks that are on the backside that could be usable. Many cannot be, but how do we--
Like on Channel Road near Peninsula Point, for instance?
Perhaps, just generally speaking.
Is it a handful?
Yeah, it's fairly--
You know, then, who cares?
No backsides, okay.
No backsides, just make it, let's make one thing of this simple.
I'm kind of maybe put backsides likely.
Oh, we'll get you then.
Just for him. Well, no, I can't tell what you've given out, whether or not that backside is going to count or not.
We'll look at that with you. We just said no backsides, universally.
I don't know if you consider a backside a rule.
We'll take a look at it. I think we have the guidance we need, so thank you for that.
All right, and then, have we given consideration to the fact that we might want to get a, I don't know, a retired inspector on board or something to help us with this, looking at the individual docks?
We'll take a good look at that, too.
Okay.
How about appeals?
Oh, yes, what, have, has, we figured out?
We haven't formulated the appeal process, and the appeal process, I'd hope it wouldn't need to be used because we would hope that the, our conversation with you as to what's dockable and usable space would be fairly collaborative. I think that's the way Chris and Shannon approach things. But if there is an appeal process, we'll propose something, we'll ask the committee and the city attorney's office to look at what that might be. We have several appeals process already in the code, including to the Harbor Commission for many of the harbor issues, so we will need to flesh that out further.
And that will be for the 11th?
Well, actually, I would recommend that that be something that's done in January and February and a little bit more thoughtfully because no one, we won't need the appeal process until we come up with the numbers, I would think. So I think we at least have that amount of time to do that. Work with the community and the Harbor Commission a little bit about that.
All right. Any other comments from?
Well, before we make the motion to continue to the 11th, is, was there no other date other than the 11th that would have worked even the week before? Or is that, I guess I wasn't part of the discussions of, or who was here and who wasn't?
I'm out of town until the day that Councilmember Hill leaves town, so.
All right, 11th it is.
I'll move, continue this.
So the proposal that, when we've looked at the usability of the council chambers is to have that meeting at 4:00.
4:00?
To adjourn this meeting to 4:00 PM on December 11th.
Yeah, the Brown Act's fairly specific about, you know, there's different types of ways to continue a meeting. So here would be, no, it's not a special meeting, it'd be an adjourned meeting, and then you just need to set the time, date, location.
The conversation doesn't stop. You have our emails, you have many of our phone numbers. Based on what you heard tonight, please continue to make comments because we keep getting farther down the road, we keep making some improvements. I know you're not leaving hopping and skipping, but I think we have made some progress in improving it. All right. That's all right. No, you were, we made it. Meeting is adjourned until?
Second.
Oh, second, okay.
Can we?
No, adjourned.